Good evening and welcome to the Town of Acton Selectmen's Meeting for June 7th, 2016. First item on the agenda, a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A motion on the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Can I have one, just make one up, change to that, if you would, Bill? On 3B, remove the-
4B.
4B, sorry about that. Remove the table, table no update, there is an update to that.
Do you want to second that, Bill?
I'll second.
All in favor? Approval of minutes of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Seconded. All in favor? Department head or committee chair updates?
How are you doing? I'm going to give you an update. We started up there in Wilson Lake, up at the dam, had a few difficulties. We had an issue with stopping the water. So, you know, we had it pretty good, but we tried to make a couple of adjustments and it didn't go quite well, so we ran out of sandbags. So, you know, thanked the fire department, we got some off them, and I replenished, well, I got to bring them up, but I went out and picked up more. Unfortunately, Sunday night, we had two inches of rain, and that didn't help none of them today. So, what I've done is I dropped the level a little bit on the dam, trying to make it more manageable. I don't think there'll be any effect on the lake. But, so right now, we're planning by ear. So, sorry about that.
So, we can't go pick up fish off the bottom?
There's no fish on the bottom. And another point I want to make is a little rumor going around there that I'm using salt in my sandbags, salted sand in my sandbags. What we're doing is we're hauling screened sand out of Rudy Pepin's pit, we're dumping it inside the sand shed. So, my guys were loading their sandbags inside instead of being outside in the sun. And that way, there, we can just push the rest of the sand we don't use back up into the pile, so. And I also called Cam, Cam Adams, today. He's the district, he runs this district for DEP. He rode around with Ken Paul, I guess he had noticed that we were working there, but I gave him a call because I'd had several people insinuating that's what I was doing. I figured the call would be made, so I made sure that he knew that wasn't happening. He has so far, there's no issues with what we're doing. So, but at this time, we're going to be planning by ear and waiting for the water table to rose in like about four inches between those two storms.
Wow. Today too, with including today?
With the rain today and what we had on Monday. So, what I've done is I've dropped my bags, two corners of my bags down to drop the water level. That way, they'd make it more manageable. We have a spot that we're gauging the water by, but I think we have a, I talked around to a couple of their big contractors that have done these, and they've given me a couple new ideas, and we're going to try and believe it will work. We're having a problem because of bottom of the bed of the lake, a lot of rock. So, we think we probably missed a couple, and it's letting the water underneath the bags we've got there.
You're talking about right below the culvert that was there?
No, no, where we're putting the sandbags. And where we're putting the sandbags, if you don't have it down flat, the water pressure's just pushing up underneath. So, what we've done is I went up to Portland yesterday, when I picked up the sandbags for the fire department and myself, I picked up some large bulk bags. They take about a yard and a half of dirt. And my crew today, we were going to do some storm cleanup today, but we ended up, it started raining, so I put them down and then filled all the rest of the bags up, so we're prepared. So, when we get that day, we can rock and roll. So, and another thing is, I've seen, I submitted, last year, I submitted a, well, this year, I mean, budget time, I'd submitted you guys a budget, okay? And, you know, you guys heard what I submitted to you, and I just wanted to do a clarification on what I submitted to you. You know, it's being publicized that I've asked for five months' worth of all this money and this and that, that I was asking for five weeks of stipend time, I just wanted that notified on TV because I've been misquoted. So, other than that, things are going well. We're going to do some storm cleanup there tomorrow, and I'm trying to get a hold of a large leaf sucker. We, all the leaves there from last fall there end up plugging up a bunch of culverts and stuff, and we're hoping that we can, I've got a fellow there that's got a really big, big one, see if we can get it off him for a week and go around and get some cleanup done, so. But, here's my-
Is the road open?
The road state, the road was only open, closed for about an hour.
Oh, so you have the new culvert in already?
No, 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 no. We were having issues with the stopping the water.
Oh, so you had to stop the whole thing?
We were there, we were there, well, we started at 6:30 in the morning, so we could get a jump on it. We spent all day Thursday getting the culvert up. I built the rails and everything for the slides, all the culverts. We had all the sandbags loaded, got all the materials up there for Thursday, so Friday, we figured we could go in there, you know, an hour, get it sandbagged, and, you know, bust it, get it done, and, you know, at least have the road only close for like four or five hours. But, we ended up only closing the road for an hour because we ended up, you know, needing to set some of the big bags in with the machine, it was taking up the whole road. So, at the end of the day, we couldn't, we couldn't continue on, it was getting too late. And one thing I wanted to emphasize is, another thing that's out there is, I had six, I'd brought up the whole crew, okay? This was a job that you have to go and do fast. So, I had two-wheelers, six-wheeler, rubber-tied backhoe, and my big excavator there. And I had six guys, guys watching the, you know, directing traffic, just steering away, two labors and an operator and myself. And obviously, if you've probably seen the payroll, okay? You'll notice that my, I didn't charge for any, half the stuff that was there, okay? There's a rumor going around that I charged a whole day for that, and I want to make sure that that's pointed out also. So, that's it, and can't wait till the election's over.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks. Bill, do you have anything for us? No? Okay. All right. Jim?
Nope.
No? Okay. Old business to Jim?
So, I reached out to American Security, which is a whole different company now, because, no, I'm sorry, not American Security, Main State Security, whole different outfit. We had some trouble with the door, so Ken Paul eventually put the door on, it was that we weren't able to, we weren't able to get it put on by, you know, a few of the people that had offered, including our contractors, turned out didn't have time. So, Ken put the door on over the weekend. Unfortunately, the door handle is on the opposite side, so the alarm now has to be moved because of the way it was wired. So, even if it was on the right side or the correct side, we wouldn't be working because the jack, the hubmaster jack in my office still doesn't work. So, all we can do is apologize and assure the people that we are doing our best to get it up and running, but it may be, you know, the 1st of July before we're getting anybody in there.
Okay, so that, we can't take any new people, but the, and the, what are we doing for the people now, the doors just unlocked so they can go in?
Yep.
Okay. All right. For closure, properties? Ed?
Sure. I've got an update on the, the one on-
Fox's Ridge?
Fox's Ridge? Milton Mills Road, whatever it was there, Fox's Ridge. I did have someone look at that, I talked to them last night, and it's not feasible, it's not going to be any benefit for a tower.
It's not high enough?
No, it's not high enough. You'd have to have a tower that would be 150 feet taller than what we have right now, and that's too tall, because we have an 80-foot tower right now, so. At the other, at the Blueberry Hill site, the problem is with the site is Blueberry Hill is in the way.
Oh.
So, it's lower, so it can't, well, it won't, it won't project out around the areas. So, I guess we'll just do whatever we need to do to recoup some money from those two piece, two lots that we have.
So, is the board's intention, you want me to prepare to-
Put both properties up for sale.
Okay.
By sealed bid?
We never put a minimum on those, do we, or any-
Well, we do, and-
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea, I mean-
I usually go, we usually contact the assessor, and then this will help us determine what the best, you know, minimum bid is, because certainly, you know, we need to make sure that we recoup at least the taxes. So, looking at the, looking at the schedule, if we put a, if we put a deadline of, let's say, Friday, Friday, July 1, for all bids, you could open them, allow, you could open them at your July 5 meeting. Does that work for both of you? That puts it out for about three weeks?
Sounds good.
Bill, does that sound all right?
Yeah. That's under right?
Right, I was listening.
The sealed bids for these two properties, we'll accept them until Friday, July 1.
Okay. Fine, right, yeah.
I'll get you a copy of the actual ad, so you can see the map and lots and so forth.
July 1.
Yeah.
And we'll open them on the 5th.
Yep. Okay, the property chief ad deadline is June 10th, no update. Abandoned properties tabled, no update. New business appointments?
So, with the fiscal year coming to an end, I kind of talked to a couple of you individually, or all of you individually, I've moved forward just the essential personnel for now, and then over the next two weeks, we can contact everybody and all the individual committees and see if they're interested in being reappointed and prepare them for your next few meetings. But just in case anything happens over the next couple of weeks, or you can't meet, those people need to be in place.
Okay. To Corey Norman, the Selectman of the Municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Deputy Code Enforcement Officer within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30, 2017, given under our hand the 7th day of June 2016. A motion?
I move that we appoint Corey Norman Deputy Code Enforcement Officer.
Seconded. All in favor? To Steve McDonough, the Selectman of the Municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Deputy Code Enforcement Officer, Local Plumbing Inspector, within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30, 2017, given under our hand the 7th day of June 2016. A motion?
Make a motion, we approve Steve McDonough as a Deputy Code Enforcement Officer, Local Plumbing Inspector.
Second.
All in favor? To Kenneth Paul, the Selectman of the Municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as a Code Enforcement Officer, Local Plumbing Inspector, Director of Planning, within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30, 2017, given under our hand the 7th day of June 2016.
Make a motion, we approve Kenneth Paul, Code Enforcement Officer, Local Plumbing Inspector and Director of Planning.
Second.
All in favor? To Robert Anderson, the Selectman of the Municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Constable within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30, 2017, given under our hand the 7th day of June 2016.
Make a motion, we approve Robert Anderson as Constable.
Second.
All in favor? To William Catanze, the Selectman of the Municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as EMA Director, within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30, 2017, given under our hand the 7th day of June 2016. Motion?
Make a motion, we approve William Catanze as the EMA Director.
Second.
All in favor? To William Catanze, the Selectman of the Municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as 911 Addressing Officer, within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30, 2017, given under our hand the 7th day of June 2016.
Make a motion, we approve William Catanze as the 911 Addressing Officer.
Second.
All in favor? To Mike Rue Senior, the Selectman of the Municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Animal Control Officer, within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30, 2017, given our, under our hand the 7th day of June 2016.
Make a motion, we approve Mike Rue Senior as the Animal Control Officer.
Second.
All in favor? DOT minutes?
Yes, I just wanted to let you know that the hearing that was held on May 26th, they actually have a transcript, word for word, of everything that was said. They're not just minutes, it's an actual transcript, it's quite interesting to read. If anybody wasn't able to attend, they're here in the clerk's office, and they asked that the board specifically receive copies of it, so.
Yeah, I attended that meeting the other night there, and I spoke to them about the issue we're having up on the, you know, it was a bridge intersection there, about the drainage issue. And they're supposed to be getting back to me, they want to, they want to kind of work with me, I guess, on it, and see if we can make something work before they, they didn't realize the culvert setups where they were, they had it drawn out differently. So, I kind of explained to them how it was working out, and so, they're supposed to be in touch, see if we can make something happen.
Where is this, Dave?
At Anderson's old store.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
One of there.
Yeah.
There's a sinkhole there, and it's getting worse and worse. Well, I've been holding off on doing it because the state said they were going to come up and redo this whole section, so I didn't want to spend town money, go fix something and have them come and redo it anyways. Well, then they just told us the other night there that this project won't happen until maybe next year. So, I, you know, I told them that this is an issue that we're having, and because of the water sitting there and all that, so we're hoping that we might be able to move on, have the state, you know, contact there, see if we can move on that a little bit quicker. So, and if we're talking DOT, you mind if I, I, like I spoke to today-
Yeah, I was going to let them know in the end.
Oh, okay, well, on Dawn, I heard some great news today, good and bad news.
A gentleman came in from DOT, and he was looking to report to the Selectman, because it's really a full-town-wide issue, because it's on a state road. He spoke to both Scott and David on the phone regarding the bridge on, down by Milton Mills, right?
Yeah. So, what do you call it, what it is, is the guardrails on the Milton Mills Bridge aren't adequate, so-
Which bridge? By the, by the post office or by the old tannery?
By the post office. The old tannery, that's a brand-new one.
Oh, okay.
But, the issue is, they had an accident up in Bath, I guess, lady went off a bridge because inadequate, and now they're stressing getting these bridges, making sure that the guardrails are up to snuff. So, unfortunately, it sounds like what they're going to end up having to do, from what he's telling me, is they may have to, they're going to be putting Jersey barriers up there, and it's going to narrow it up for a while.
Would everybody use French Street?
Well, they're going to turn it into a one-lane road from the sounds of it.
Oh.
And, but the good news is, Town Act is not responsible for any of those bridges on the Malsum River. That was something that we've been trying to, I've been researching, nobody really ever gave me a straight answer until today. This feller explained to me that any bridge on either a town road or state road, obviously a state road they're responsible for, but whenever it comes to a state, a town road where there's a bridge goes from town road into another state, in the state, that's their issue.
So, the hopper is theirs to-
Hopper road's their problem.
Nice.
And so, what I did is I asked him to go down there and evaluate the railings on that, because they also. So, so he was supposed to go on right down and check that out too. So, that was good news to me.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, we've, we've been talking about this for years, and who's responsible and this and that, so, want to find out, we are.
That's great.
Yeah, I think just in the last four or five years, the one on the hopper road has been getting really bad.
Yeah, well, it's been run into a zillion times.
Yeah.
And, I mean, we've been, you know, we've put the guardrail up, at least it stops them from flying over the edge, but unfortunately, it's hooked to the bridge, so that don't help none. But, we've been doing our springtime maintenance, we've been washing it like the state, you know, chose us to do, and, you know, all we can do with that. But, it was good news to me today that is one thing that we don't have to worry about.
Good, great.
Sheriff's Department letter. Dear Selectmen, the York County Sheriff's Office is committed to promoting and maintaining law enforcement activities that support and enhance the safety of your community. We continually strive to address issues that jeopardize the safety and well-being of your citizens and work toward enhancing the quality of life in York County. Motorists exceeding the posted speed limit are affecting the quality of life in our communities. Speeders are a danger to the motoring public and to themselves. In 2015, York County experienced 21 fatal motor vehicle crashes, more than any other county in the state. This was a 75% increase from the previous year. Additionally, data provided by the Mass. Department of Transportation showed that there were 500 speed crashes in York County, with 325 of them involving personal injuries. To address this serious issue, Chief Deputy Tom Barron wrote a grant documenting our need for additional traffic enforcement resources. The Maine Bureau of Highway Safety agreed with the chief and awarded the sheriff's office This grant allows us to dedicate deputies for speed enforcement, and will run until September. This is one way in which we look to address the needs of the communities we serve. However, we ask that you help us spread the word about speeding problem and urge all citizens to drive within the posted speed limits. During this speed enforcement campaign, we'll be adding deputies in and around your community. Our goal is to encourage voluntary compliance through education and high visibility. Nevertheless, deputies will be stopping and ticketing speeders. Our goal is to save lives, and we thank you for your anticipated support. Sincerely, William L. King, Junior Sheriff. So, slow it down for the summer, folks, they're going to be out there. All right. Personnel policy, do we have it X so I can only, I only have to read the changes?
Yeah, the-
The draft one?
The draft one that you have, they're all, they're grayed out. So, the first one is on page 2.
Sign time sheet should be presented to the treasurer by 12:00 PM on the next Monday, following the end of the work week. So, we're changing it to 12:00 PM on the next Monday.
That's what we've been doing anyways for the last-
Yeah, but it wasn't in the policy. So, now it's in the policy. D-2, okay, yep. Full-day closing, if the building facility housing the department fails to open on a business day, the employee will not be paid. The employee may, however, use accrued paid time off, PTO, to offset the loss of pay.
So, just changing the name from flex time to PTO, really?
Okay.
And this, you may want to mention this is, comes from the workshop that we had with all the department heads, so that it's not a change that, input is from everybody.
Yeah, all the department heads met with the Selectman last week, and these are changes that we all agreed upon. And under holidays, we're adding Easter, or we'll, I thought we, I thought we had said to take that off.
I think it is being removed. That's why it's highlighted, just so you can remove it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Easter was on there, and Easter's on a Sunday, and nobody works on Sundays for the town, so we're taking that off of the personnel policy. All right. Longevity incentive program. After five years of employment with the town, an employee may cash up to one week of accrued PTO or paid time off at the end of the calendar year. After eight years of employment with the town, an employee may cash out to two weeks of accrued PTO at the end of the calendar year. And after 10 years of employment with the town, an employee may cash out up to three weeks of accrued paid time off at the end of the calendar year. Those three changes are made because some of our people don't get to take their leave because they still have to work, and we can't close Town Hall to do it. And it's the hope of Bob that his employees won't be taking as much as they leave during the summer, so that he doesn't, not running with less people on the job, so we all agreed to change those. All right. Article 10 is quite a bit of change. A, paid time off, PTO benefits are available to full-time employees working in excess of 20 hours per week on a continuing basis. Paid time off can be used for vacation, sick or personal reasons. Employees accrue paid time off, PTO, at the following rates. Data of hire to one year, .039 times hours worked. After one year, .058 times hours worked. After two years, .077 times hours worked. And after 10 years, .096 times hours worked. Vacations and planned absences will be scheduled at such time or times as shall be mutually agreeable to the employee and their supervisors. Due consideration will be given to an employee's seniority in regard to scheduling vacations. If an employee is sick or has a personal emergency that he or she must attend to, the employee is expected to notify their immediate supervisor no less than one hour before the scheduled time of work. D, employees must use the PTO within the calendar year that it is earned. Employees will be permitted to carry over up to one week equivalent of PTO into the next calendar year, but must use that week within the first six months of the year. PTO may not be used until 90 days of employment has been completed. Employees may receive their PTO pay prior to the start of the vacation, but must submit a request through the department head to the town treasurer in writing at least 10 days in advance. This PTO use policy will take effect January 1, 2017. Employees who currently have earned vacation time have until December 31, 2016 to use their vacation. However, they may carry over no more than one week into the new calendar year. Accrual for current employees will begin effective October 1, 2016, to allow for time to start banking for the change to the new policy of 1-1-17. Accrual for new employees will begin with the date of hire. The PTO bio option for longevity employees who are less than 10 years will begin December 2017. Is that it?
That's it.
Yep. Okay. Motion on the new policy?
I move that we approve the changes to the new policy.
Seconded. All in favor?
That's the draft, Ted.
Oops. You're right. Anybody have any other business? Public comment? Come on down.
Thank you. My name is Holly Mooney. I have a couple of comments. So, I was listening to Mr. Winchell, he said that somebody had misquoted him last night, that somebody, it would have been me. I have the paperwork right here. I will read it, because I don't think I did misspeak. Winter maintenance starting on November, well, first of all, this is 2016-2017 budget for District 2. And this is snow plow minimums. Winter maintenance, starting on November 15 and ending April 1, would like to receive an eight-hour minimum for plow truck and driver due to no snow and a seven-day work week at rate set by town meeting. That's per truck, and that's five months, so I'm not sure how I misspoke.
Say five.
Well, if you figure out from November 15 to April 1-
I think if you went to the-
Excuse me, do I, can I speak? Can it be my turn?
Let her finish and then you-
Yeah, Kennedy explained last night.
Dave, we'll let you come up and talk after she's done.
I'm defending that I had, was told that I misspoke, and I have the right to. I am a taxpayer, and I'm not going to be bullied by Mr. Winchell. He's not going to bully me.
Okay.
Second of all, Mr. Winchell speaks a lot about how important it is to come to meetings. I agree with that, but I also think it's very important to, for a road commissioner to be efficient out there on the roadways. So, I decide, excuse me, I decided to pull, because I'm down there and I live there, and I went by Wilson on Friday, and I saw a lot of people standing around. And since Mr. Winchell's so set on making sure that everything's tidy, I want to make sure he's being tidy also. So, I heard him speak tonight and said that he wanted to get things fast, done fast and quickly on Friday, which he billed for six people at 10 and 1/2 hours on Friday. He also billed for Thursday, and if you figure it out, what they've done down there, they've put sandbags down there, and that's it. And I heard him say tonight that they're kind of not really sure what to do. He's calling the big guys, which, that's what I'm wondering, as a taxpayer, how long are we going to wait for Mr. Winchell to waste our money before a big group comes in that does this all the time? Because we've already spent, in those two days, he says that he didn't bill for much, but we've already spent over $2,900 for a day and a half with Mr. Winchell and his crew down there. So, it's all good, and it's all good to come to meetings and talk it up and talk a good talk, but you need to be efficient out there on those roads and not bleed our town, and that's how I feel.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you. And I'll wait, because I'm sure I'm going to have something else.
I would appreciate if I could stand up here by myself.
Sure, you go right ahead.
Um, you look at this payroll, okay? I had, I explained how many trucks I had up there, okay? Now, it was interesting, because we had, we had some of their crew driving by with Now, um, it was interesting because we had, we had some of their crew driving by with video cameras out the window. The guys were standing on the road directing traffic. There was two guys directing traffic because the vet clinic was up there open, okay? We had to make sure they knew how to get there. I had two guys passing sandbags down to myself and another guy down in the hole placing sandbags. Okay, we started at six thirty in the morning. Okay, that's why there's ten and a half hours of time here. We busted our tail. Okay, I couldn't even walk when I got home. Now, if you look, okay, we got, on the international truck, I got four hours of time on that truck. It was there on the job the whole day. Okay, on the day we, I had two hours, okay? I spent two hundred dollars to get the machine there. I've got two hours on that machine, okay? I didn't charge, no way is any other time I could have charged for that machine. You go down here with a one ton. The one ton went back and forth to the town shed getting sandbags and stuff along with the other truck. Numerous times, I only charged four hours for that, okay? And I had numerous pieces of equipment that I sent, that stayed on that job all day long that did not get charged for, okay? So as we're riding around spying on Dave Winchell, okay, um, yes, the job went sour in a hurry. But we're all doing something that, you know, um, you're dealing with mother nature, you're dealing with the elements, okay? Yeah, but, uh, we've got more than one day worth of time here, okay? We have Wednesday, okay, you have to-
You do not have Wednesday.
Okay, excuse me, I'm spooking, okay?
Let him, let him finish.
So if you look at Wednesday here, if you look at Wednesday's time, okay? Wednesday, there was a truck that had to go all the way to Sanford, okay, and have a boom load those culvert onto the truck, okay? You can read it right here, okay? Let's go down to Thursday. The guys finished filling these sandbags. They shoveled twelve yards of sand. Two guys, twelve yards of sand in little bags, which have, open as this big. It's not much fun, okay? So, um, you know, the, the cat loader down here, okay, that was shipping sandbags out of the international truck, hoisting them down over so we didn't have to carry them a hundred feet to it, okay? I honestly, um, this is an insult, okay? This is an insult, okay? I go out there and I bust my tail and we come up to candidates night, last night, and it was all about me. We're crapping on me. Now we're going through my payrolls. Well, I can tell you right now, okay? That's why when we created this, I introduced Excel to this town hall. Because before they used to write it out in pen and paper and nobody knew what, anything was done. That's why I list everything that I do, okay? Now, I'm not gonna get accused of screwing the town of Acton, okay? We spent four, almost a full week over there, moved two hundred yards of dirt on the, on the Goose Pond Road. Then we're gonna have to haul four hundred yards back in, but nobody said a damn thing about that, okay? Nobody said about the hundred thousand dollars they just paved H Road.
Okay, okay.
Put pavement down into something that would put a shoulder on it. That was a waste of money, but don't crack down on, this, this is bull-
Language, we're on live TV.
Okay, so there's a couple of things that I want to address there. First of all, that, um, I didn't even include Wednesday, so now we're over three thousand dollars for-
It's easy with the bottom.
Because I haven't even included. I wasn't sure that he actually, I was giving him the benefit of the doubt that he hadn't worked there on Wednesday. So we're even over, we're over, we're way over what I had said then, if, if that's on there. And again, it's six people and a lot of them were standing around and I was coming back from work. I wasn't videotaping anybody. I was going to work and coming back from work and that's it. But the thing is that I really have a hard time with is when we're, when we're charging for a seven-yard truck, an excavator, another truck, um, a loader, another truck, it's insane. And if you don't know what you're doing, then call the big guys in. Don't waste the town's money, is what I'm saying. And he can get all mad at me and he can try to bully me and yell and scream all he wants, but Scott's paving budget is ninety-three percent goes to paving and that is not what Mr. Winchell's, can I finish that? Mr. Winchell's is in the eighties, so there is a difference. So paving is supposed to be, be meant for paving. You can yell at me, you can try to do whatever you want, but the facts are the facts. And right now- Right now, we don't have, I think you did some of it.
Let's, let's stay on the facts, okay?
Right now, we have a bunch of sandbags down in Wilson Lake. I don't know if they, I heard him mention salt or sand. I don't know anything about that. I hope there's no salt in those. I really hope there's no salt in those because then he'd be contaminating the lake.
Here we go.
So if he can't handle doing it, then bring in the big guys to do it. Don't bleed our town.
Yeah, that's enough.
And that's enough.
I doubt highly if he's got salt in those bags. That's just, that's just accusing.
You know where I got this information, okay? You know where I got this information? I got it off Topics, okay? That's where I got this information. All this information came off Topics. I, I come up here to tell you guys that and fell right into it.
You said it, Dave. Excuse me.
All right, all right, that's enough. We're gonna stop this. No, we're gonna stop this.
I have done nothing but treat the town of Acton right.